Good evening, everyone. My name is Barbara Latif, Chairman of the Prince William County School Board. I would like to call this public meeting of the Prince William County School Board on the school reopening to order. The purpose of this meeting, the special emergency meeting of the Prince William County School Board, is being conducted electronically for the limited purpose of listening to citizen comment pertaining to the reopening of schools. This meeting is authorized by Section 2.23708.2A3 of the Virginia's Freedom of Information Act and the April 22, 2020 Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits elected school boards to meet electronically during the current state of emergency. Amendment 28 limits the purpose of such meetings to matters which are statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the school board's discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. Accordingly, the agenda for this school board meeting is confined to the sole agenda item of receiving citizen input on the reopening of schools, which is a critical matter. Critical matter created by the state of emergency and the COVID-19 pandemic. For this reason, all citizens who have signed up to speak electronically this evening must confine their comments to the topic of the school reopening. Regarding the citizen comment, the Prince William County School Board will now begin a public meeting to provide citizens who have signed up in advance the opportunity to speak on schools reopening. Speakers will be called in the order in which they have signed up. Please listen for your name. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. We have 68 speakers signed up to speak this evening. And now we will turn it over to our facilitator. Before I do that, I'm going to ask the speakers that tonight, because of the number of speakers we have, there will be a hard stop at three minutes. That is not because I'm trying to be rude or to cut folks off. I will ask you to look at the timer, wrap up when you get down to three minutes. But it is very important for us to hear from all 68 people. Remember, anyone can send the board and the entire board emails of what they feel, what they may not have been able to say tonight. We have been receiving emails at probably a pace of every five minutes. We have a lot of emails that we're going through about folks and your concerns about school reopening. I want you to know that the entire school board has been working on this. They are reading the emails. They are working hard. The administration and staff have put together some draft work that we will talk about tomorrow regarding the reopening of schools in a work session that will be available for anyone to watch tomorrow evening, starting at 5:00. We believe that a lot of information will be given there, so please tune into that. But we are here to hear your inputs. We've been listening to your input over the course of these many weeks since the school closure, and we thank you all for your patience this evening and for signing up to speak. So with that in mind, I would turn this over to Jason Stevens, our facilitator, and in our IT folks, Mr. Townsend and everyone who's helping, thank you for getting this together again. And I will now turn it over to Jason. I will also remind the public that, you know, as you look at the board members who are on the screen, we have a list of all the speakers. And the board members traditionally like to write notes next to the speaker's name and what their topic is or their concerns of, or things that the board members may want to look into further. So I want everyone to be aware that when we are looking down, it is not because we are not paying attention, it is because we are either taking notes or looking at our computer screen or our other devices to manage what we're trying to get done here this evening. So please understand that there is a lot of information, and we're really trying to take note of it and listen to our citizens. So next, Jason, please take over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first speaker will be Rebecca Anderson. Your microphone is unmuted. You have the floor.
Can you hear me? Okay, hi. My name is Rebecca Anderson. I've been teaching in Prince William County Schools for 14 years. As a general music teacher, I teach every student in the school. To open school in person puts many educators and students at a greater risk of contracting and spreading the virus as we move from class to class. Due to distancing recommendations, there are large parts of the music curriculum that I wouldn't be able to teach in person. For example, we can't sing, play instruments, or respond to music with movement in the way that our curriculum demands. If I had the opportunity to teach elementary general music virtually, I could meet those objectives. In March, we were thrust into what I call crisis teaching. It made sense that school was optional for families, and it made sense that teachers couldn't introduce new material and content during that time, but it felt like losing everything. I saw my own two kids dig their heels in about doing their work, and as an educator, crisis teaching felt like trying to do my job with my hands tied behind my back. Since March, PWCS educators have been working so hard. This summer, I'm presenting at a virtual conference about transforming my most engaging in-person content to virtual content in both synchronous and asynchronous ways. I am co-leading a staycation virtual camp that ends in a live streaming showcase of student performances. We even have a Zoom special guest who is the new voice of the Aflac Duck. Educators have a way of making the most delicious lemonade out of lemons, and we know the very coolest people. In the fall, PWCS should have 100% virtual school with the following exceptions. There needs to be a way to implement IEPs in a reasonably safe environment for both students and educators, especially those in self-contained classrooms. In closing, I leave you with four thoughts. Number one, my spouse and I are both dedicated PWCS educators. If we go to a hybrid model choice like some of our neighboring counties, what are our two school-aged children going to do on their virtual days? Number two, the hybrid model doubles teacher work without increasing pay at all, right after we were pretty much forced into signing a furlough and potential reduction in force additions to our contracts. Number three, when are the elementary string specialists going to be sent to surveys that all the other school-based employees received? And number four, lastly, PWCS educators are working. Even in the summer, we're working on how to make the fall better for virtual learning. Please give us a chance to teach new material and content virtually in the fall, not crisis schooling, but actual virtual school. Give us a chance to dazzle you instead of putting everyone at more risk. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Kate Olson Flynn. Your microphone is unmuted.
All right. Good evening, board. My name is Dr. Kate Olson Flynn, and I'm a professor of education. My expertise is in teaching and learning in schools. What I want to emphasize tonight is what counts as optimal learning online, because whatever program we decide for the fall, most of the time, the students will be online or distance learning. First, it is important to understand that humans learn through interaction. As babies, we look to our caregivers to learn language. We babble in the language we hear when we interact with our mothers or caregivers. We then learn to read by looking and reading on laps or in schools and groups with teachers and others reading with us. We learn with others, with our teachers, with our peers. We learn from participating with others in activities in person. And while face-to-face in-person learning is optimal, we are now forced to embrace online learning to stay safe. But this doesn't mean that we only send worksheets home, post videos on Nearpod, or have students read web links. Online instruction, just like any instruction, needs to be face-to-face as well. If we know that learning happens through interaction, then why would we eliminate it from online? And we have the capability to do it through video conferencing platforms like Zoom. There is no excuse not to have synchronous learning teaching online to provide students with necessary interaction and support they need from an actual teacher. Even I, with graduate students at George Mason, meet on Zoom each class session to interact and instruct the content face-to-face before I send them to do anything on their own. For this reason, my main point here is to urge and persuade you, the board, not to accept any plan for online learning that doesn't include synchronous face-to-face learning of subjects daily on Zoom. There is no way that Canvas or any other learning management system can substitute for actual learning face-to-face with the teacher and peers, because Canvas is what it is. It is a management system, not a learning system and not a teaching system. Just because I use Blackboard with my students to post information and content does not count as my instruction. I'm concerned for teachers, for children, for public education. We need each other. Parents need teachers, and teachers need the parents, and the kids need us all to work together, to listen to each other, and work together to create a system that works for everyone's best interest. As Lincoln said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand, and neither can school." For this reason, I ask that the administration and school board sets date to revisit the school reopening plans each month, to revise them and make them better, as we know, as we will know more each day, week, and month, as our plans, how our plans are working, and how we must change to meet the needs of our students, teachers, and parents. Only by working together and listening to everyone's concerns can we navigate our way through this pandemic. Thank you very much for all your hard work and your time in trying to make this happen. I know it's difficult, and I appreciate all that you guys do. Good evening.
Okay, our next speaker is Magali Hurtado. Unmute yourself, and you have the floor. Hurtado.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you. Good evening. I really don't envy the position you are in, but I'm grateful, because I know you want to make the right decisions for our community. My concerns are specific to early elementary, kindergarten through third grade. According to the Virginia Department of Education, the Virginia Board of Education's number-one priority is to provide high-quality learning environments for all students. Families who can choose a 100% virtual platform are able to provide such environments, but how about families who can't? For many families in our communities, particularly those with younger children that need adult support, the school facilities are the only place where they can rely on for adequate learning environments. I chimed in on a Facebook conversation on a local page when a teacher commented that teachers are not babysitters. I agree. Teachers are educators. For many of our young children, education simply can't happen on a distant environment. I pointed that out, and this person asked if I am an educator. I explained that I am just a mom that is not trained to support a 100% virtual environment. He replied that at least I recognize that this is my problem and not the school's. Even if we go 100% virtual, I truly hope that voices telling parents that their inability to support virtual learning is not the school's problem are not voices heavily weighing in these conversations. Saying that schools are not daycares but advocating for virtual-only options because of child-led reasons doesn't seem consistent. As much as I would like to go back to our old normal, I understand that it is not realistic. I also know that we are among the wealthiest counties in the nation, so I don't think it is unrealistic to expect that we can get more than the bare minimum, which is what a virtual-only option for all would represent at the elementary level. I believe our county is mostly capable of offering a hybrid option. My teacher hit the teacher, I'm sorry, my son hit the teacher jackpot in spring. The lever of engagement and synchronous education he received in spring was perfect, but not everybody can say the same. Not all families are confident that consistency will be achieved by fall, and maybe they just don't want their kids to attempt to learn through a computer screen. A virtual-only option for elementary school may push families away from our schools, which eventually will result in less funding, and that will, as usually, hurt the most vulnerable children. Incoming kindergarteners are usually evaluated for motor or speech services. How is that going to happen on a virtual environment? Please think of all students and support plans that include in-person classes for elementary school children. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Zachary Evans. You can unmute your microphone.
Good evening. Just want to thank the school board members and Dr. Walts for giving myself and other citizens the time to speak. I only want to focus on one issue when it comes to reopening our schools, and that's our students' social, emotional well-being and mental health. This prolonged shutdown and time away from schools has not been good for our students. Studies across the country are showing depression is almost up as high as 40% in students across the country. Most parents and doctors have attributed that to students being out of their normal routine of being in school. I had several students reach out to me about the difficulty of doing online learning and keeping up with things, given what was going on in the world, more specifically when they had other siblings that were in different grades and schools as them. I also had several parents email me talking about the difficulties of keeping up their kids engaged and in a good enough mood to do online work, and they admitted it was hard and challenging. While I know as a teacher that this school year is going to be like any that we've had before, and I appreciate all the hard work that's going into the fall to get us safely in school, whether it's online or in person, I just want the board to think about how our kids are suffering from not being able to go to school. March 13th was our last day of school in person, and from then on, we switched to online learning after the two-week break mandated by Governor Northam during that time. I just wanted to note that I taught 138 students this past year. From the time that we went to online learning only, the highest participation rate that I got in any given week was 32 students out of 138. That's 23%, not even a fourth of my students that would turn in work. I understand that the work wasn't graded, and that might have contributed to the low turnout rate, but it's a huge concern for me going into the fall if we open virtually about what percentage of our students are going to do their work. I want to be back in my classroom, helping my students as best I can, as long as we can be safe. I don't want a repeat of what happened in the spring to happen again in the fall, because I don't want our students to fall even further back than what they already are. But I know that sometimes that's not realistic. I just want to thank everyone for all their hard work and giving us a voice. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Catherine Jackson. Catherine Jackson, you can unmute yourself. Hello? Catherine Jackson, you have the floor. Okay, we're having some issues with that audio. Erin Rasmussen, you have the floor, if you unmute your microphone.
Oh, hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
First, I thank all volunteers behind the scenes. I appreciate the situation's complexity and time limitations. As a Prince William County Schools parent and taxpayer, I also have certain needs and expectations of PWCS. My husband and I both work outside the home, and our children are ages seven and 10. When schools closed, I had to stop working. In our experience, PWCS's response demonstrated lack of agility, creativity, and the ability to pivot. The resulting quality of education was poor and as unsustainable as an educational plan. I realize the reopening aims to mitigate this. However, I am very concerned that we lack a plan and time enough to implement one effectively. Virginia Department of Education requires a plan to be publicly available 15 days prior to being submitted, and to be submitted 15 days prior to start of school. School starts on August 25th, so that first deadline is July 26, and today is July 7th. That's in less than 20 days. We are having public comment without having a plan on which to comment. For these reasons and more, I advocate for return to school five days a week, full-time with safety measures. This will allow children to get high-quality education and parents to return to work. I did not come upon this decision lightly and take my children's health seriously along with that of my home and school community. I trust the American Association of Pediatrics, who advocate for children returning to schools. Kids are not super-spreaders. After an extended isolation period, children are in great need of more inconsistent, richer experiences. Extensive screen time is not good for the neuroanatomical and neurocognitive development of elementary school children's brains. Social, emotional, cognitive, and communication skills require an in-person setting to develop normally. High-quality, effective instruction includes real-time feedback from teachers in person. I'm also a realist and 99% sure that there will be some form of distance learning. With elementary-aged children who require supervision, I know that we parents will again have to facilitate distance learning in real time. To succeed, PWCS should do the following. One, offer high-quality parent training delivered effectively prior to the start of distance learning. This will enable us not only to be learning extenders, but also to continue our careers. Two, conduct a second parent survey. Parents have critical information on distance learning from the spring. Prince William County should be actively seeking it out, what worked, didn't, what ideas were tried but should, and what parents learned from their peers navigating this elsewhere successfully. The survey on June 22nd did not address this. Third, another public comment meeting after tomorrow's work session. Today's forum is great, but we're lacking content and plans to offer feedback on. And lastly, a return to normal plan. Along with a worst-case 100% distance learning scenario, we must have a best-case scenario, which enables a pivot to full in-person learning without delay, when and as soon as the situation warrants. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Jim Martin. You can unmute your microphone.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'd like to thank the board for your work on the return to school project thus far. I'm the father of three children in Prince William County Schools, and my goal in speaking this evening is to encourage Prince William County Schools to use science and data, not fear, to establish a return to school plan. Keep in mind, the guidance from Virginia Department of Education is just that, guidance, and not a requirement. And I'm going to base a lot of my comments based upon the science. Can you hear me? Okay, great. So keep in mind, infection requires exposure to infected persons, sufficient viral load in 15 minutes of contact. So all those factors have to be in place for infection to incur. A lot of the research shows that children are different in this virus than others. They have smaller lung volumes and have less viral load and less infectivity. Adult-to-adult transmission is more likely and less likely for child-to-child transition. If you look at the data, children zero through 19 are 11% of the cases in Virginia, but make up 21% of the population. In the U.S., that's 22% of the population, only 2% of the cases. There was a great presentation put on for Loudoun County Public Schools, and they referenced a couple cases. One in Australia, 18 cases were present in a school. They had 735 contacts and only two transmissions. In Denmark, 10 cases, 43 contacts, zero transmissions. In Ireland, six cases, 1,155 contacts, and two transmissions from adults. In France, three cases, 1,340 contacts and zero transmissions. Switching to a slightly different topic, I know masks have been mentioned for lower-age children, and given our experience in a church-type setting, this is not a viable option for, I would say, children probably under the age of eight or nine. It involves increased touching of the face, placing the mask in their mouth, and inevitably, I'm sure the children will start sharing each other's masks. Switching to a different topic, more logistical, there's really no viable option for childcare for people to return to work. The school is designed to have children attend there, and no other setting is viable at this point. And in doing so, we may place elderly caregivers at risk when they're forced to provide childcare for children who are not attending schools. We need to establish a plan to screen children prior to entering the building that starts at home, and encouraging children, encouraging parents to keep sick children home, temperature checks for entry, nurses train in PPE how to isolate children, and how to get an infected child safely home. Ultimately, we need to establish benchmarks on how to return to normal. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Brent Hileman. If you unmute your microphone.
Okay, thanks. I'm actually going to reiterate a lot of stuff he just said. I like to use data and facts to make decisions. Early on, we didn't have a lot of information. However, we have enough to make a decision if you actually look at it and not on a superficial data to support that statement. If you use the information from Virginia Department of Health, at July 3rd, there's a little bit over 64,000 total cases. Out of those cases, only 11% of those involved people under 20 years old. And out of those 64,000, only a little bit over 6,300 were actually hospitalized. And out of those, only 103, I can say again, 103 people with under age of 20 were hospitalized, like 1.6% in the state of Virginia.
Walts told me he was just...
Now, according to the deaths, we were almost about 1,900 deaths in Virginia. Underage 20, there has been zero, zero deaths for the age of under 20 in Virginia. 90% of the deaths are related to 16 and above, and more than half of them are nursing homes. According to CDC, most transmission is through airborne droplets, and is rare that's transmitted through touch. On Friday, CDC actually reported that the percentage of death has dropped low enough that the U.S. is at the epidemic threshold, which means, which is good news, means we might be coming out of Zoom. Again, American Academy of Pediatrics has released guidance for this, too. They're strong advocates that have kids physically in school. They state evidence that there's negative impact on children when schools close in the spring. They said it doesn't appear that children and adolescents play a major role in amplifying COVID-19. They state that there is a conundrum of evidence that indicates that children and adolescents are less likely to be symptomatic and less likely to become infected and to spread infections, which means they don't need to wear masks either. In other words, there's also minimal risk. To put it in perspective, there are six pediatric deaths related influenza, zero from COVID, but we're not worried about the flu. Early in pandemic, one thing was stressed more than anything was that we needed to flatten the curve to prevent the hospital from being overwhelmed by patients. It has never sold to us at that time that we needed to eliminate the risk. We're well past that point. Why are we still acting on old information or worse misinformation? Living in fear isn't the answer. Better awareness and hygiene is. If you don't let kids get back to school full-time, how are families going to work or have to manage when they have to go to work? Not everybody works from home. Parents aren't teachers. The kids need their education and their social skills that are usually get in school. I'm not discounting the fears that some people have. They have the reasons, and I'm not here to debate that. But one suggestion that I would have is if parents are worried about sending their kids to school, let them do the online learning. If the teachers are worried, let those teachers be their online teachers. If parents and teachers are fine sending their kids go back to school, then let them teach in school. That's all I have.
Okay, our next speaker is Farzad Abshadi. Actually, they've connected with the wrong source, unless you can hear us. No, they're connected by phone. One second, our next speaker. Next speaker is Janice Sullivan. You have the floor.
Hi, I'm Dr. Janice Sullivan. I'm Dr. Latif, respected school board members, superintendent, Walts, and community. You may already know me as past president of Prince William County Special Education PTA, now secretary. I'm also a member of two young boys, both autistic, one non-verbal, and one with suspected praxia. And I'm also a family physician. I've also referred to position statements from the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Virginia PTA. Thank you all for trying your best to serve our community through our schools during this pandemic. I think everyone has the health and safety of all students and staff as the number-one priority, and I appreciate our school leaders having this common goal. This is all very complex and challenging. Communication, cooperation, coordination are all essential during these hard times. As you know, this pandemic has made life hard for everyone, but it has made life much more challenging for the most vulnerable, especially those with disabilities. Virtual learning was challenging for my children and many other special education students. And the pandemic truly made me and my husband appreciate it. Soon, just don't go to school for epidemics. Before the pandemic, my children were beginning to thrive in their respective schools, interacting with friends, following routines, acquiring social skills, epidemics, and their development. On Zoom, my youngest could only sustain attention with his teacher in needs for about 10 minutes and wasn't interacting with his peers. With that, repression has likely occurred for all students, but those students with disabilities have likely been the hardest hit, missing out on the valuable one-to-one interaction with their special education teachers and additional valuable resources that just can't be given. Support children going back to school in person, especially those with special needs, most supportive of a hybrid, so long as the health of all those involved, including teachers and staff, are addressed. I wholeheartedly am aware of this. I wholeheartedly am aware this will be a daunting task. I have already discussed with school leaders that face shields are an important investment for in person instruction as these students will need to see lips to progress in speech, meet I E P goals and otherwise feel comfortable around others. Receiving in person instruction brings forth many other questions. Additional staff such as nurse aides and more than usual teachers aides will be important so that teachers get assistance in abiding by the CDC guidelines. If we do send our students back to school, we still want the experience to be in an environment that is supportive and enjoyable, otherwise all efforts are counterproductive. For example, stressful weather in the students or staff not only is not conducive to learning, but also lowers one's immunity. Other concerns collected through SEPTA include childcare for teachers' children, staff protection, sick leave policies for staff, and balancing schoolwork schedules. In conclusion, thank you again for this time.
Okay, our next speaker is Sean Gentry.
Oh, hold on. Yeah. Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir, you're live.
Okay, so I'm a parent of two students in Prince William County schools. I just want to kind of touch that everything's been touched on. My way forward is kind of like what I want to call a new normal because at some point, I've read interviews, I've done tons of research, and I just want to give a little bit of feedback to you guys about some of the things I've heard from actual students and some teachers as well. So I want you to listen to these comments and take them for what they're worth, but they're real. When I asked my own kids, some of the comments I get back were, there's, I miss my friends. I have no one to talk to. I can't ask a question without disrupting the entire, the class. I have not ever, I have not interacted with other students. The life is sucked out of the teachers. There's no social interaction. This is absolutely the worst possible way to do classes. There's no hands on experience. It's not real. The workload is not intense and it's dumbed down to the version of school and it's very lonely. I could go on with these comments, but I think you guys get the point. Like, the students, I think they also miss the interaction. Being able to talk to their friends, make eye contact with their friends. That's not saying that I want to go for with going, returning to school full time. I do like, in a way, some what Fairfax County is doing, the hybrid thing. Two days a week, smaller groups, the social distancing is allowed because of the smaller students. I do agree with the first speaker who said, these teachers, they're being worked to death trying to, A, learn the technology and B, do online learning. And if they're then asked to do in person learning as well, it could be hard and difficult. So if we divide it up into two days, it's still hopefully could be an eight hour day for the teachers. You know, part of it could be online learning and part of it could be in classroom learning, which is, would be for your base courses. And also, I want to talk really quickly about accountability. There's zero accountability, as people have touched on. And without a rewards system, incentives, where are my straight A students? Where are my A B students? What about the high school students? What are they going to put on their, their, you know, their online college applications? What is the reward system and accountability? So I think those are the things that need to be addressed. I think everybody's aware of the health and safety and we can all talk about that. It's pretty black and white. But accountability for the students, giving them a rewards incentives for actually showing up and doing the work and not dumbing it down so that it's, it's the lowest common denominator. I have kids who are in N J H S. I have advanced students and I'd like them to see them excel. But there is a social interaction and a social responsibility that we're missing, not being in person. And that's all I have.
Okay, our next speaker is Jaime Van Echo.
Hi, my name is Jamie Van Echo. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Argapour, members of the school board and Dr. Waltz. I've also sent a letter. Overall, I just urge you to consider the quality of the instruction for all learners and their families when ironing out logistics of a return to school plan. First, access. How will we effectively provide learning opportunities for all learners if not every child has access? Having a computer and reliable internet source are the first steps in ensuring equitable access. However, what is the plan to provide direct instruction to the parents, caregivers and students on the use of such technology for education? The education system is assuming that all learners have the means and the experience to navigate online instruction and that all parents have the experience and expertise of using and teaching digital technology for learning. Second, how do we address, assess efficacy? The students will need direct instruction on how to learn in this new way. How long do we wait before we know that the plan isn't working? If the school is required that we make a decision for our child's education a hundred percent virtual versus a hundred percent in person, and that doesn't work, how long do we wait before we get to change the environment? Do you know the average time a parent must wait when they believe their child may have a learning disability? A hundred days. If the school agrees with the parent and if they have the data. We ended the last school year in quarantine at just over ninety days. A hundred days is too long to wait. How will this affect the free and appropriate education of all learners? Third, for students with disabilities, the I E P and five oh four plans created prior to and during the end of year school closures will all need addendums to adhere to what the new plan is going to look like. How will all those meetings be held legally with all members present and no actual data on how the student is going to demonstrate mastery of critical skills? Many parents want to work with the schools, but when there's no communication, parents fear they are not going to be able to meet their child's specific needs. They're reliant on the schools for support and instruction. When the schools are transparent with plans and treat parents as partners in education, every member of the team feels heard and valued. Fourth, peer learning, we've talked about it. Peers help kids. My kids want to go back to school. Every kid I know wants to go back to school. They're not afraid, they're not unafraid of the risks. They're not fearful of change. They miss their community. Peer relationships between students with varying abilities, including those with disabilities, is crucial to their post secondary success. How can we make that continue in a virtual environment? And finally, I know I'm speaking fast. Over a hundred already vetted and approved community and stakeholders can be used to do some of the gathering of information and review of plans. The Special Education Advisory Committee, the C T E Advisory Council, the Gifted Education Advisory Committee, Safe Schools Advisory Council, the Superintendent's Administrative Support Advisory Council, the Superintendent's Advisory Council Instruction, the Wellness Advisory Committee, the Teaching Assistant Advisory Council, the Advisory Council on Equity, and the P T A and SEPTA can be used for support for parent involvement and distribution of information. We want to help. Thank you so much for your time. You all have done an amazing job so far, and I look forward to working with you more in the future. Good luck.
Okay, our next speaker is Riley O'Casey.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Just begin.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Latif, board members, Dr. Waltz. My name is Riley O'Casey and my address is on file. You've got some huge decisions to make. And as I shared with everybody in my email today, you know, we, we thank you for the difficult decisions, the hard work that you all have been, have been doing. As the president of the Prince William Education Association, I have received hundreds of concerns and questions from our members regarding the return to school plan. The anxiousness of our employees is real. The questions are endless and once you think you have an answer, another question comes along that baffles you and sends you on a wild goose chase looking for the answer. Will we go back? Will we not go back? What will the plan look like? Will we be safe? P W E A strongly believes that safety must be the number one priority for our students and staff. And I believe that the school board and the school division feels the same way. We want to see the kids. We want to see our students. We want to be in the classroom, but at what cost? Not at the cost of the lives of our educators. Board members, please listen to all stakeholders tonight as they express their concerns. Tomorrow, when the return to school plan is presented, it is your responsibility to ask questions. Ask as many questions as possible to understand what will happen in Prince William County schools in the fall. Thank you again for all of your hard work and good luck.
Okay, our next speaker is Astrid Newman Weathers.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for the time. I wanted to first and foremost say for me and my house, my children. I have two children that go to Garfield Senior High School, but I've talked with them and they don't want to go back into the classroom from them. And my son is in special needs. My daughter has expelled throughout all of her school year. My son is an at risk for his health. So am I. So are my adult brothers who were also in Prince William County. Both of them are autistic. I have my grandmother as well, who has dementia. So the possibilities are not worth that risk for my children to go to, go into school, be with other people, other adults. My son is fifteen years old. He is six foot two. He wears size seventeen shoes. He's a grown person. So things that he can get, what he could be a carrier for, that's my concern to bring that back home. He may be perfectly fine, but I can't risk the rest of my family. The other part of my son is in special ed. And even when he was in school in person, there were challenges with people following his I E P. It got significantly worse when it did go virtual. There was one outstanding super teacher named Mr. Meadows. He was Marcus's algebra teacher and did a phenomenal job making sure that he touched base with him. He touched base with me. That's a really key factor in going virtual is making sure that the teachers, instructors, keep in contact with the parents. And the parents also have a respect for what each instructor does as well. My daughter, she had all A's and one B. She loved being virtual. She was able to learn at her own pace and so much so that she got the invitation for the, for the honor society. And she's also taking part in the virtual STEM camp this July. So I'm very pleased with going virtual. And that's what I told them they were going to do. My only concern about virtual education and virtual learning is, can we please use the same type of platforms instead of, my children had seven different platforms to try to navigate? And also the security of the websites that are used. I currently work in I T and a lot of the sites that teachers were offering children to go to weren't the most secure for our network at home to be used. But thank you guys for your time and also good luck.
Okay, our next speaker is Miriam Carrera.
Can you guys hear?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, who are you? Good evening, everybody. I want to thank everybody on the board just for your hard work and everything. I currently have an uprising ninth grader and an eleventh grader over at Patriot High School. And my concern is, is just the fact that we are trying to, you know, kind of force the, the subject of having our kids go full time, you know, in school learning, which I'm totally not for it. I want to do either hybrid or, you know, virtual. But if we do go that route, I would really want everyone or you guys to consider, you know, A, like the young lady that went before me, using the same platform. Because when we did try it this, at the end of the school year, it was just very confusing for the kids to go to different, you know, platforms and try to get all the work done. And also have the teachers be a little bit more accommodating and be a little bit more available for the kids. Because that was one of the issues that I did have with my high schooler. Just when we were trying to communicate with, with the teachers, they weren't, you know, available whenever we, we needed to talk to them. And that was one of, like I said, one of our biggest concerns. And the other concern that I do have is that my uprising ninth grader has a five oh four plan. So I need to know exactly what we will be doing with that because, you know, we do have some learning issues with, with her. So I need to know what the plan will be with our, with our five oh four plan kids and things like that. So if we can kind of get that a little bit more concrete, like the other person that spoke, a couple of people before me, you know, we're kind of late in the game. Everybody else, a couple other counties have already, you know, they do have a plan in place and we're kind of late in the game. So that's a little concerning for me as a parent. So please take that in consideration and we need to get this together. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay, our next speaker is Alicia Saunders. You unmute your microphone, you have the floor. Alicia Saunders.
Good evening. I don't really have too much more to offer than what a lot of parents have already said. My concern specifically is in regards to, I have an uprising first grader. I'm elementary school student at Kyle Wilson. And I know it was a challenge for us to be a two parent federal employee working household with also two younger children to be able to assist her in the fullest capacity at the end of last school year. I'm not the parent to call in and say, I definitely want my child to be back in school five days a week. I actually don't have an absolute preference at this moment. However, my biggest concern is piggybacking off what one of the first educators spoke on, on this call, which is ensuring that there is engaging and interactive instructional time given by these educators to their students. At the end of last school year, we had to do a lot of independent work with our six year old. And it took away from the instructional time we could give her because, as I stated already, we're two working parents who also have workloads that we have to tend to. And with that, the teacher was only available via office hours. And that was concerning because the office hour times were typically during the peak time of our workday. So I felt as if my child wasn't receiving the full support to help her navigate through the lesson plans, which were set home to help them finish out the school year. So I just hope that if our school district does vote to have a hybrid option or one hundred percent virtual, that they ensure that the educators are able to be engaging, available and to provide interactive lesson plans to help our children succeed this school year. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Christine Gutermin. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm speaking to you tonight as the mother of a rising second grader, a board member of my school's P T O, a member of my principal's advisory council and a member of the superintendent's advisory council on instruction. My comments will pertains to the learning environment and experience of the young learner. While it was understood why the March shutdown of schools was necessary, the country, state and county has a much better understanding of the virus and how we mitigate risk while continuing to live, work and worship. It's now time to work through how we mitigate risk while allowing our children to return to school full time in person. As of July fifth, Prince William County reported three hundred and forty three total cases of COVID in children nine and below, representing only three point seven percent of total cases. Nine children have been hospitalized and zero have died. This age group has an extremely low rate of high risk consequences. The argument is made that they can contract and spread the virus to those who are high risk. This is our personal responsibility and choice entered the equation. If you are a family with children, parents or grandparents that fit high risk categories, you should protect them and you should be allowed the choice to continue your child's education virtually. However, protecting those high risk groups should not come at the expense of the academic, social and emotional needs of all county children. We should have the choice as parents to send our children back to school full time in person. While the transition to virtual review last March was necessary, I'm not sure anyone would agree that the spring experience was positive or successful. Communication at the classroom level became scant. Learning curves for implementation by teachers was enormous. And parental involvement to get lower elementary school students to participate in all virtual learning became a full time job. As the spring semester went on, I watched my engaged, hardworking, hardworking lover of school become disengaged, uninterested and frustrated. School was no longer fun, interesting or challenging. I'm concerned that as we transition to the fall, I am not convinced the county is prepared to roll out a detailed plan of new learning or a new suite of virtual platforms. I'm concerned that our children will continue to fall behind. If we as a community can return to work, church, restaurants, gyms and gather while wearing masks, washing our hands and sanitizing our spaces, we should be able to do the same for our schools without requiring our kids to be in class at best fifty percent of the time. Our kids are suffering. They miss structure, friends, teachers and consistent learning. Our young students need to be in the classroom full time. It's unrealistic to think our children have not already re-entered society. Our children have been in childcare, church, summer camps, swimming pools and playing with friends. They have been coming in contact with people and objects at some level of risk. Schools will be no different. There are other serious logistical concerns. The onslaught of last minute childcare needs, facilitation of learning at those facilities, potential risk of additional exposure to COVID at those. How is that risk exposure any lower than having the same group of children together five days a week in a more controlled environment? How is that risk exposure any lower than having the same group of children together five days a week in a more controlled environment? Please consider the long-term effects of our youngest learners as you form your plans. Allow the choice and place emphasis on students and learning and their development. Our young learners should return to school full-time in person. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Carol Emerson.
Good evening. My name is Carol Emerson, and I'm a Prince William County School elementary teacher and parent of a Prince William County School high school student. In my seventeen years in education, I have never felt so strongly the need to advocate for both my and my student's safety. If we were here today to talk solely about what is the best choice academically, my comments would be vastly different. There's no disagreement that in-person education is better. However, we don't have the luxury to consider how to reopen our schools solely from an academic perspective this year. If we've learned anything since March, it's that no one wins 100% in this pandemic. COVID cases are still active and in some places on the rise in our county, state, and nation. An expert state, continued social distancing, use of masks, and avoiding crowded places are the best ways to lower our risk. P W C S is underfunded and underprepared to return safely in person with the current CDC return-to-school guidelines. As Dr. Waltz reported last month, it would cost over forty million dollars to fulfill these requirements. Forty million dollars our division does not have. Opening schools in person creates vectoring and safety concerns for students, staff, and their families. What happens when a student in my classroom tests positive or their family member tests positive? What happens when I test positive? Nowhere in any guidelines or suggestions in neighboring counties have I seen those issues considered or addressed. I personally live with high at-risk individuals as a caretaker of my elderly parents. And I think about how returning to work impacts the potential health of my loved ones. Until a vaccine is available or additional funding is secured to create additional jobs, the burden of extra cleaning, cost of P P E, and enforcing social distancing with young children fall solely on the backs of already overburdened classroom teachers and staff. That is not acceptable. Therefore, I see the safest solution is a virtual or extremely structured and enforced hybrid program for next fall. This plan must be equitable for our students with special education plans such as I E Ps, five oh fours, those receiving special services, and those without adequate access to internet. I realize the ask here is significant, but the ask should not be the loss or significant impairment of a child, staff member, or family member's life. Thank you for your time and understanding that we cannot approach this solely through the lens as to only what is best academically or what is in the easiest and most adequate needs of childcare. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Catherine Smart.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. I'm Catherine Smart. I'm the parent of a Woodbridge High School senior, and my husband works in the city. I'm also a teacher at Colgan High School. I recommend that high school learning in Prince William County schools be conducted completely in a virtual environment for the fall semester. A month ago, my teenage son became infected with COVID-19. He came home with the virus unknowingly. It took less than an hour for him to spread it to the rest of the family. Half a week passed before any of us exhibited symptoms. All four of us had different symptoms. My nineteen-year-old had virtually none. My seventeen-year-old experienced violent vomiting that was so hard his back seized up. He was disoriented and couldn't stand on his own. My husband and I had debilitating headaches, muscle aches, and chills, hallucinations, dizziness, and extreme fatigue. Symptoms have lasted a month so far, and we're still having them. There was at least a week apiece where my husband and I were unable to care for ourselves or our sons. I couldn't even sit up without help. Our family is like your family. Our lives are enmeshed in multiple community settings, both within Prince William County and throughout the broader D M V area. It is impossible to extricate my viral vulnerability in my workplace from my husbands. Any students I interact with by being in a school facility are automatically added to the risk that must be carried by my husband and children and by anyone that they must interact with. Second, COVID has cost my family a month so far. In that time, we've had four terrifying trips to the ER, one of them today, and several conversations about whether we needed to sign do-not-resuscitate orders for the parents in my household. We've been wildly viciously ill, and yet our cases are considered mild. The potential risk to others who might not be unlucky as lucky is unconscionable. Third, and this is the most important, not one of us ever had a fever. Never. This is one of the basic triage methods for detecting illness. And yet, if the four of us were students at a Prince William County school, it would have been a minimum of four days before our disease was noticeable enough to test. Taking student temperatures will simply not function as an accurate screening measure. Fourth, young people might, might not become as ill as older people. But the staff at your kid's school, my kid's school, the school I teach at, we don't live in a vacuum. We have families for whom we must provide care and safety. Our health and our lives are at risk if we are forced to attend in-school person without a vaccine or at least some significant advancement in medical ability to prevent and halt the virus. Any method of minimizing the daily population in a high school here still means more than a thousand students. More importantly, most staff would come in contact with large members of the student population. There's no ability to rotate faculty. This is an exponential risk for staff and an unbearable human cost. Finally, none of the many, many doctors we have spoken to can tell us whether we're now immune or for the, or for how long. The clock is ticking on my family's vulnerability, and it's a terrifying sound. My son, a rising senior, does not feel comfortable attending in-person schooling at his beloved Woodbridge High School. His fear of becoming ill with this virus again is so great that he is willing to miss his in-person senior year to ensure his physical well-being. That speaks volumes. My family is not a theoretical concept. We are just.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next speaker was Andrea McHale. You have the floor.
Hi there. My name is Andrea McHale. I teach students with learning disabilities. I'm also a parent of P W C S students. My family has all also had COVID, very mild cases. We were much, much milder than the previous speaker. But I completely understand that it's out there, and it's a danger to many people. My focus will be on elementary school, as I don't have expertise in middle or high. In the state of Virginia, we've all been wearing masks and our COVID numbers are dropping. Assuming our numbers keep dropping, we should do everything we can, I think, to safely have students face-to-face with teachers at least some of the time. We'd all be wearing masks and doing our best with social distance. An all-online learning scenario cannot be effective or even possible for some families, specifically considering younger children. They can't be expected to manage their own online learning. If all instruction is online, younger children without parents who are able to sit with them during instruction and at-home practice will not likely get a quality education. And if both parents go back to work and kids go to daycare, will those students be online learning from daycare centers? As a parent, I can tell you that even my typically developing teenage children, who are generally good students, struggled with online learning. They needed help from me, but I was busy teaching online. As a teacher, I noticed very different outcomes of my online teaching sessions compared to in-person. I couldn't gauge my students' understanding as well. I couldn't hear my students as well. They couldn't hear me as well. And because they were all the size of a thumbnail, I couldn't see them as well. We teachers use what we see and hear to make split-second decisions all day about our instruction. None of that was happening in my online instruction. Technologically, without touchscreens, it was very difficult to practice math problems or writing. Students were dropping off because of Wi-Fi or battery issues. I had students hiding in bathrooms because their houses were too noisy, and the background noise in those houses made it into the Zoom sessions, so we all had more trouble hearing each other. Online learning problems like these and many others will not be solved by technology. Canvas will not make these issues go away. I think rather than push to go all online, we should try to adapt how we teach in schools. We could consider having kids who live close walk to school, leaving space for social distance on our buses. We all did it when we were younger. We could post crossing guards along common walking routes. We could consider splitting classes among days of the week or even splitting the actual days between morning and afternoon groups, where teachers work a whole day, but their classes are split between morning and afternoon, giving room for social distance. The morning kids who typically get school lunch grab theirs on their way out. The afternoon kids grab theirs on their way in. Without recess or lunchtimes, more academic content could fit into the half-days. Our local pools have mastered quick disinfecting between groups of patrons with power sprayers. We have time to look into quick and effective cleaning techniques. There are so many ideas that people have come up with to help get students face-to-face with teachers. Maybe it's outside learning when the weather permits. Maybe it's some variation of split schedules with cleaning and the hybrid things that people are, people keep mentioning. I think we need to focus on the safety and feasibility of those ideas rather than perfecting the technical availability of online instruction. Thank you all for what you're doing. I know it's ridiculous and hard, and thank you for the opportunity to share my ideas.
Okay, our next speaker is Monica Bishop. Monica Bishop, if you unmute your microphone, you have the floor.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Monica Bishop, and I do have two high school students in Prince William County schools. I am representing my family to advocate for in-person classroom education because we believe it is vital for our children's overall health and well-being. School education is only partly about academics. We must take into account the importance that the life experiences students gain from face-to-face interaction with their peers and teachers for their mental health, social, emotional, and physical development that prepares them to become productive adults in society. Certainly, teachers' voices should be heard, and reasonable safety measures need to be in place for the students and adults at school. But we must not be myopic in our views by solely focusing on the risk of COVID-19. I propose that the school board develops a team of motivated teachers and representatives from transportation, food and health services, security, and administration to collaborate on what needs to be done to provide a reasonably safe environment for our students and teachers to return to school. And I advise that you refer to the American Academy of Pediatrics guidelines as a starting point, because they had some really sound advice on, you know, the safety of our children, especially since they are at lower risk and lower vectors to pass on the virus. I personally have been back to in-person patient care for the past eight weeks. And yes, the thought of being in close quarters with my patients was scary at first, even though I was excited to, to go back to work and take care of patients. And the new safety protocols and technology changes were overwhelming. But I adapted to my new work responsibilities, and so will you. We are all facing new challenges, and our job responsibilities are different than we expected. But much like my patients need me, your students need you. We are about six months into this pandemic and cannot shelter in place indefinitely. We must take proactive stance on prioritizing education and new safety protocols for everyone to return to school and work to create a stable future for our children. And as an eye doctor, I know the potential deleterious effects virtual learning will have on our children's eye develop and eye development and our educators' eye health. They will not only experience more headaches, eye strain, and eye fatigue from excessive use on digital devices, but their risk for progressive nearsightedness increases ocular disease conditions such as retinal detachments, glaucoma, early onset cataracts, and permanent vision loss from early onset macular degeneration, also known as myopic maculopathy. I, for one, do not want my children staring at the computer all day. Our children need a good balance of routine, structure, and physical activity for their healthy development. And so I understand that some families will need all virtual, and I, I support that. But for my family and for their overall health and well-being, I do support in-classroom and in-person education. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, our next speaker is Rebecca Timothy.
All right, good evening. My name is Rebecca Timothy, and I'm a teacher, an ESOL teacher in Prince William County schools. And I'm also a parent to three students in Prince William County Middle School and High School. I feel specifically I'll be addressing my remarks towards ESOL students and students with disabilities or special needs. I feel that if we went to a hybrid model, that would not be effective for their education for many reasons. One of them is that access to technology that many of these students still, even if they have devices, they might not have good internet connections in their homes. Some of them don't interact as well with technology as they do in person, especially in these groups. And for them to have effective education, I feel that they would need daily in-person instruction for many reasons. So I'm not going to speak to the whole population, but specifically for ESOL and also our students with special needs. And when we returned to school, I did have an observation about masks. I think it's important for students to wear masks in the hallways or other areas where they're in groups and they can't social distance. However, in terms of language development with these students being able to see the formation of sounds and words for teachers of ESOL, students with special needs, and also our early grade, I was wondering if it would be possible, or I'd ask the board to consider if those teachers could wear shields instead of masks, because I think that would help the students learn more easily. And then I also had a small issue with air circulation. In some of our schools, there are certain classrooms where the air circulation isn't as good as other parts of the building. And in those situations, I would ask if the school would be able to provide either fans or air purifiers or if teachers could bring in their own, just to help with air circulation in some classrooms. I know that you're all working hard on plans for return to school, and it's hard because no matter what you end up with, there will probably be some people who are not pleased. So I just want to say thank you for all your hard work, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jordan Trekey. You have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Jordan Trekey. I'm a pharmacologist specializing in neuroscience with the federal government. My statement tonight will have two aspects. The first, as we, parents and citizens hope for the future, and the second, the reality of what we're currently facing. Based upon these two factors, I strongly urge you to put the health and safety of the students and educators of Prince William County first and foremost. We are all striving for a sense of normalcy and have high hopes that one day soon we can go back to our normal lives. We look forward to a time when our children can attend school so they can get back on track with their studies, socializing, and learning. My wife and I have had the extreme fortune of being able to work from home and continue teaching our children grade-level appropriate material, so that when they return to school, they're at the correct level. I understand that many parents and guardians may not have this luxury due to the jobs that may not allow working from home or work that needs to be done in person. However, as I stated before, the health and safety of the children and educators is paramount and needs to be the board's primary consideration. While Virginia has been one of the leaders nationwide in wearing masks and social distancing, this could unfortunately change in an instant. The currently available scientific information demonstrates that the virus is highly transmissible with a large percentage of individuals that are asymptomatic. We are fortunate that children and younger adults have fared much better than older people in our community. However, this does not mean that children are not contracting COVID-19 with serious adverse effects. The low numbers cited by previous speakers is because schools were shut down, children did not have to go to jobs outside the house, and stay-at-home orders were initiated. Based upon the recent survey sent from the school district, one of the options that's being adopted by other counties is to send students to school for one or two days per week with strict social distancing measures in place on the bus and in the school. On multiple occasions, I've gone to my children's school to meet with teachers and have lunch. While your proposals to eliminate the lunchroom and recess would help, the student interactions, even in small classroom settings, will greatly expose each of them to a possibly asymptomatic carrier of COVID-19 or a mild case mistaken for cold or allergies. What this will allow is for each child to become a carrier of COVID-19, thus possibly spreading it to others in the household that will ultimately include older adults, many of whom are following guidelines to distance themselves from others. Temperature checks do not catch asymptomatic and presymptomatic infected persons. Keeping five, six, seven-year-olds from touching each other for an eight-hour school day has a very poor success rate. Older children may have behaved better, but ultimately will still expose each other to a possible infection. We want our children to go back to school. We want to return to normal. We want to shake hands with friends again. The spring Zoom meetings were literally a train wreck in my opinion, but that is no one's fault. However, you have had months now to look for alternatives that could include small Zoom meetings with higher frequency and structured curriculum to be sent home. This will not be easy, and in fact, it may be next to impossible. However, it's the only way to ensure that an outbreak does not occur on school grounds and that any disease transmission was not due to a failure on behalf of the school district. Until a vaccine is shown to be effective, which medically speaking at the earliest will most likely be at the spring of 2021, I strongly urge you to procure an effective online learning tool, train your staff to use it effectively, and maintain a full-time online learning platform until it's safe to return to school. Thanks for giving this opportunity to speak to you. That's all I have. Thanks for giving this opportunity to speak to you. That's all I have.
Our next speaker is Kimberly Sanchez.
Hi. Hi, yes. First of all, I just want to thank you for letting me speak this evening. While you are hard at to come up, working hard to come up with a decision on the upcoming school year, I just wanted to mention a few things just to keep in mind. Number one being, not every parent has the ability to work from home to make sure that their child is paying attention to their class or doing the schoolwork. Many parents do work six and seven days a week, 14-hour shifts, and don't have enough PTO hours to take off to make sure their child attends an online class. Many of them don't get a P, get enough PTO or get an PTO in general. Number two, those families who do have the resources to send their child to a daycare, it is not the responsibility of the childcare facility to be on top of the child while they're attending a Zoom class or doing schoolwork, making sure they pay attention and making sure they pay attention. That being said, will daycares even provide a laptop or computer, a tablet for the school-aged kids to attend their online class? Number three, there are many families in Prince William County that were given a laptop by the school to borrow and to keep. Other families were not given one. Could it be possible to receive one for free or one borrowed, not both? Since many families will need a device if you do decide to do a virtual class, will Prince William County schools provide a device for all those families in need? Because many families cannot afford to buy one, especially when they are just returning to work after the COVID-19 shutdown. Their paychecks are most likely going to go that have been way past overdue for months. So putting a burden on them getting their child an electronic device to attend school is not their priority at the moment. Lastly, many children do not even have the ability to sit still. Speaking more on the younger age, pre-K to maybe even fifth grade, they don't have the ability to stay still for 45 minutes to even an hour looking at a screen. With all the distractions at home such as TV, other siblings playing around, or even their toys, how do we know that our children will get enough education to actually grasp on virtual learning? All I ask for you to take in count every family situation. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Amanda Miller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Amanda Miller. I work in early education for the past 10 years. I currently work in Centerville, Virginia as a curriculum developer and teacher training. I wanted to suggest that Prince William County maybe put out surveys to families as you have in the past, asking families on if they are comfortable sending their child to school full-time or if they don't have the health, or if they do have a health risk that they could attend full-time virtually. I think by giving that option to the parents, you might be able to see that you will naturally decrease the amount of students in a classroom by those that have spoken that do have a risk versus those who are comfortable in sending their children, as long as you put in proper safety measures. You can have as well teachers who are no longer comfortable lead the virtual classes and those that are comfortable to come in. You can ask teachers to bring proof that they are in a, are not able to come into the school for those, for those that aren't comfortable or can't do it. Sorry, I'm all over the place. By not having the kids in school, we're missing cooperative learning between students, social, emotional development. Also, something to keep in mind, schools are safe places for many students of Prince William County. Many students confide in teachers and counselors for concerns in which they have at their home. If they are left at home, then the people that they might be reporting they have concerns to can now monitor that conversation. What will families with children do on home learning days? Many families are going back to work with Phase Three in Virginia. These families are now forced to choose between leaving a child at home or providing for their family and putting food on the table. I work in a childcare center. We have been given numbers and guidelines that are not attainable to be able to care for the rest of the counties. This means that families who can't afford childcare may not have the space to put them in. Over three childcares in Centerville, Virginia, in a five-mile surrounding have already closed down. Many and other families cannot afford childcare. I have three children who are in Prince William County schools. One of my children, Tucker, has emotional issues steaming from the lack of peer companionship and interaction that he once had. He now screams and cries and asks me daily when he'll be able to see his friends. The, he has ADHD issues. So during the Zoom meetings, he just simply puts the tablet down, twiddles his thumbs. Also, the Zoom meetings often are during work hours where my husband and I work full-time. So one thing is going to lack, either my work or my children. I have another student.
Our next speaker is Dawn Evans. Dawn Evans, you have the floor, and we are sticking to that three-minute time limit because we have a lot of speakers.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Walts. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Dawn Evans, and my address and phone number are on file with the court. I've taught in this county for over 30 years, and I can honestly say I still love what I do. One thing for sure is I certainly don't teach the same way today as I even did five years ago. Our students are different, and we have to adjust. Our sudden change to online this past spring was a big adjustment for everyone, students, parents, and teachers. I had a fairly good experience with online. I was fortunate. I had a large portion of my students attend our daily meetings. However, I know that was not the case in many schools for various reasons. My niece teaches at a Title I school, and on any given day, the most students she had in attendance were three. It was that way across her grade level. They had to combine and do a grade-level Zoom, and even then, the attendance was still low. I know many teachers spend the first few weeks of school teaching students how to log into the computer, do Google searches, how to use Power Test, accessing the tools of Microsoft Office, practicing CSOL and Flipgrid, which are two programs we use. And in addition, I'm still teaching reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. I teach fifth grade. And I still had students who couldn't log into the computer independently in January. It was an ongoing review. I hope we're able to have students safely in our buildings in the fall for multiple reasons. Social, emotional well-being is a huge reason, obviously. And having the time to teach them the technology they will most likely need for whatever model the county adopts. Imagine teaching elementary students new technology on a Zoom call. I know school will look very different this year. I want everyone to be safe, and I know there are many questions still to be answered. I'm hoping the decision will give choices for those who are at risk to continue online, and those that are able to be physically and safely in the building are able to, even if it's only for two days a week. I know there are many challenges ahead, no matter what the decision, and perhaps there are different models for elementary, middle, and high school. I hope we can be open-minded to that as well. We know that summer slide is real, but this COVID pandemic will have huge consequences for the most important stakeholders, our students. No matter what the decision, I will be raring and ready with a positive attitude. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandra Kern. Do you have the floor? Sandra Kern, your microphone is on.
All right.
You need to turn off the, the second device that you're watching.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Kern. Good evening. My name is Sandra Kern. My address is on file, and I'm a student in Prince William County in special education as a rising ninth grader. I came before the board to address my concern for my students as well as others that need to bridge the gap in their special education again. The approach to reopening our schools will have a great impact on learning. Delivery of a curriculum that has holes and is not concrete for all students will impact learning. My child has an IDP on file. His learning is most definitely impacted. Every student must have an equal opportunity to fate, a free and appropriate public education. How is special education transparent and taught in a virtual learning environment? Accommodations, one-to-one, hopefully, doesn't adhere. Accountability for our students and teachers, well-being, is on this board. The opportunities to return to classroom unprepared does not, in my opinion, seem to be the ideal for the greater good of our community. Health, safety, and the student's education require a real recipe for success. Not a minimal personal protective equipment, which this county school system must still address. We need a safe learning environment, period. Providing each student technology equipment is vital and a lifeline for this board. However, the access to the curriculum must be in place and available to all students. Who is teaching or updating our kids on how to use a program or to even begin virtual classes? Not everyone has internet. How will these students learn? We need to fulfill the practice first. Expecting students to go to a remote site is mindless. Connection is something this board and our Board of Supervisors should clearly work together to achieve. Inequities I've seen in action at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. And in my lifetime, my own district suffers social, economic, education concerns. Levelling the playing field is no longer a request but a requirement. There has never been a plan to educate our children properly home down. This I have my own concern and experience. Now we all need a home-down Band-Aid for our students stuck at home. As an education body, you must act for the greater good of our students. A 30-minute Zoom class is about an education. Going back to a school where their issues of enforcing social distancing, busing, food service, partitions in classrooms, required daily cleaning, temperature checks, and wearing masks during lessons, our teachers' health risks to their families are exponential. Is the risk worth the reward? Health is a priority, simple fact. Pick a direction and explain it. There is no easy answer. I am a parent advocate for my son's education. Graduation is our goal. In four years, he needs to walk. Parents need time to prepare.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Rollehan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak. I have three children. Two of them are currently at Springwoods Elementary. And I have a little one who's supposed to go to kindergarten. I'm currently a stay-at-home mom, but I'm also a former teacher. I support a hybrid model in which students would be able to go back to school for at least a couple days of in-person instruction. As a former educator, I understand the importance of children having in-person connections with teachers and peers, especially for their brain development and their social, emotional health. Currently, the AAP is strongly advocating that we have a goal of students being physically present in school in the fall. My biggest concerns right now are for equitable access for all families. An all-virtual school model seems to be best suited for a family with a stay-at-home parent. My concern is for single working parents and dual-working parent homes. I'm also concerned for our ESOL students, especially those with parents who aren't fluent in the English language. And all virtual school models seems like it would only widen the achievement gap for these students. During the spring, my oldest child would have Zoom meetings where she would have, at best, half of her class present. As a family that has an ideal setup for a virtual school, we were still met with many challenges, including having different methods of accessing our children's schoolwork along with different programs to access the gifted program work and the typical technical difficulties that one encounters with the varying technology that we were expected to use. As a stay-at-home parent and a former teacher, I was able to devote all of my time and attention to teaching my children. However, I could not provide them with the social interaction with their peers that they so badly craved, which I feel will negatively impact their mental, social, emotional health. When my family first learned that school would be closed, we decided to purchase an additional laptop so that both of our school-aged children would have access to online material. When my husband was working, we then had to have one of the children not on a computer as often. I wonder what the county's plan is to provide devices to all families, especially families that might need multiple devices. Another concern I have is for students with IEPs. My daughter received speech services and did not get any speech over the last couple of months of school. What accommodations are being made for children who do have really severe needs? We know enough now with all the data that there are precautions we can take to open schools with different safety measures such as masks and social distancing. Thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Angela Lello. You can unmute your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have the floor.
Hi, thanks. My name is Angela Lello, and I'm calling as a parent of two children with autism who attend the schools in the area. I have a child who attends Westridge Elementary School. And I would just like to echo the recommendations made by previous speakers about the need to prioritize equity in learning for children who come from various backgrounds. Students with autism students who have IEPs and other students who come family situations who are not able to access learning through virtual means need different plans in place. I think a hybrid model is a good model, but it should not be the only model. I recommend that the school board take that resources. And then after they have those plans in place for those students who need the most assistance, then move forward by implementing a hybrid model for those students who are able to learn successfully via Zoom. Both my students with autism struggled with Zoom. They lacked access to their related services. And I also want to strongly recommend that the plan adopt, or the board adopt a plan to proactively plan for the provision of compensatory services, related services included, through next summer and even into the following school year. So during breaks, during winter break, spring break this year, break next year, I think the school board should proactively plan how to make up the ESOL services for students with the most needs. And thank you again for all of the time and listening to our community. And I really hope that you prioritize the needs of students with autism and other developmental disabilities in our district. And thank you for everything you're doing.
Our next speaker is Bonnie Keller. You can unmute your microphone, Bonnie Keller. There you go.
Hi there. Hi there. I'm Bonnie Keller. I'm a, it'll be year 23 for me teaching. This is my third year in Prince William County. You may have seen an article about me in the most recent scoop on about an award that I recently won. In addition to teaching at Colgan, I'm also a parent of a student at Colgan. He has mild autism, anxiety, and ADHD. So I come at this with a couple of different hats that I'm wearing. First, I need to recognize, I think everybody needs to recognize that no matter what we do, it's going to be wrong. And that we know that no matter what we do, learning this year is going to be very different. It will not be the same, and I don't think we should expect the same level of learning as a normal year. There's just not been enough time to train teachers, staff, or students, or parents in how to use the technology in addition to the fact that a lot of people don't have the technology at all. So we need to remember that students are very resilient, and they will come back from this as they move forward in their futures. As a teacher, I'm fearful of returning to in-person learning because even though right now, Virginia, now Virginia seems to be one of the states where we are not rising, I predict that that's going to change. We are entering the second wave, so to speak, although a lot of people would argue that we're still in the first wave. There's still a lot of people who will not wear masks, will tell their children not to wear masks, et cetera. It's a discussion that's heavy on a lot of the local community boards. My son is terrified of returning to school. His anxiety, ADHD, and autism mean that he is just absolutely terrified of coming back, even though he loves, loves Colgan. Right now, our building, especially the more modern buildings, we do not have access to windows that open, and we, we know that the HVAC systems are not capable of filtering out things as small as these viruses. If we do require that teachers go back in person, who's going to be responsible for the sick leave? Who's going to be responsible for what happens when students or teachers die? What about the psychological effects? Are you going to provide high-quality PPE? Are you going to enforce the mask-wearing for students? Because that's a real concern. We need to, to be able to have more time to learn how to do a proper online program, and that's what I recommend. Thanks for your time. I don't envy you.
Okay, our next speaker is Alma Flores. You can unmute your microphone, and you have the floor. Alma Flores. Alma Flores.
Hi there, I'm sorry. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you have the floor.
Okay, just to, I don't have anything new to add or anything like that, I just, I have a seven-year-old and a twelve-year-old that, my twelve-year-old, she's so afraid even going out and even hearing the word COVID-19. So I just want to go and say, you know, a hundred percent, definitely virtual learning, even though we've been having issues back and forth, you know, with the Zoom apps and all the stuff and getting in touch with the teachers. I mean, we have to understand all this stuff is fairly new for, you know, our teachers, staff, you know, parents, students, and we have to understand that. And I know this is not going to be COVID-19, hope, you know, let's pray to God it's not going to be here forever. You know, a thing that's going to be gone sooner than later. I just want to add that, you know, definitely virtual, you know, learning for my kids and for the rest of them that are, you know, along with me. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Williams. I don't see a microphone icon next to your name. I don't know if your microphone is on or if there's a computer issue. Rebecca Williams. Okay, we will go to Sabrina Redd. Sabrina Redd, if you unmute your microphone, you have the floor. Sabrina Redd.
Hi.
There you go.
Hi, hello, this is Sabrina, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you very much. I have not really decided what I should be advocating for, frankly, because it's a very confusing time, but I think the model that would best suit my family and my children is probably the hybrid version. I have a child, I have two children, elementary age, in Prince William, both go to Ashland, one is in special needs, and the other child is typically developing, about to be a first grader. My concerns for my family and my child or children is, my special needs child is high risk. He has just about every condition that you could think that the CDC would identify. And when I think about both of my children going back into school, I think about my typically developing, healthy boy bringing, you know, COVID back to him, my other child, and to my family, and we also have health risks. I would recommend that you do what other speakers have suggested, which is take data from the families. Send out detailed surveys, asking the families what they would be interested in participating in as far as their upcoming education year. I noticed when I looked, looked at the VDOE plan, learning is prioritized in person for, you know, vulnerable population and special education students. I would like to advocate that learning in the virtual environment should also be prioritized, not just in person. Because while the spring kind of shutdown was frantic and confusing, that's just because it was new. We have since transitioned to an extended school year with my little special needs boy, and it's working. We have a direct instruction, one-on-one. I know that's probably not going to be possible going into the school year, but the teachers have kind of figured things out, and I would just like to advocate that you not have it be an all-or-nothing proposition for the special education population, whether that they have to come into school or they don't have a meaningful opportunity in the learning environment. And that means training the parents, training the care, the care providers, also the teachers, and leveraging the teacher's aides, which wasn't done much in the spring effectively. And I understand it's the circumstances, but moving into the next school year, the teacher's aides definitely can support in that learning environment. I would just also, I guess, like to wrap it up by saying, you know, we cannot have a situation where there's no new learning and related services aren't provided. The online environment can happen. We're doing all of our services for my little boy via telehealth, and that can happen in the school. So please don't let that happen again. I know it was dynamic situation, but we really need to be able to have multiple opportunities for families who have multiple types of children that are attending school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scott Bishop. Scott Bishop, you can unmute your microphone.
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to thank the board, thanks. I know you guys have spent a lot of time on this, and we just certainly appreciate that. So I'm the parent of two high school students, and I just want to say that, you know, I support a return to in-person learning. I don't feel that the social, academic, and community experience can be replicated virtually. I think those skills are, are important, that they develop, they're vital to creating functional, successful individuals. Many, many, many of the jobs that, that these students will do when they graduate cannot be done virtually, and will never be able to be done virtually. And so preparing them for those jobs is just as important. You know, the school board, in the schools, the community, we've put a lot of effort into creating a model of our schools that works, and that's the current model. That's the model that we already have. It works. And so I think, you know, return to that model, kids returning to in-person, person learning, that's the best choice. And for those, you know, I, I want to be sensitive to those people that are scared and they're concerned. And, you know, I think the only way I could see possible to address that is through providing the ability for them to remotely log in, virtually log into the classroom, that's, that's being, is occurring at its normally scheduled time. They can log in, they can attend, they can be there virtually if they choose to, but it still allows those other students who want to go to school to the opportunity to go to school. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Jason Buchanan. You can unmute your microphone. Jason Buchanan, yes, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. I just wanted to say, I am, my daughter is a rising first grader at Bristol Run Elementary. I recognize this task force will have a difficult job of servicing the dual priorities of our children's safety and their educational quality. However, these priorities are not mutually exclusive, and today I'm wholeheartedly advocating for the option for younger elementary children to return to full five-day school schedule this fall, for those of us who wish to pursue it. While there are still many uncertainties surrounding COVID, it's clear that healthy school-aged children, which compromise a bulk of this population, are among the least seriously impacted by this virus. And twenty-two other European countries, which have allowed children to return to school, have seen no serious spike in cases. The American Academy of Pediatrics has also advocated this position, and in a recent Senate testimony, Dr. Fauci agreed this is a priority. If this task force simply follows a lockstep with other counties like Fairfax, who've given parents the absurd choice of fully online or just two days a week, then as Education Secretary Betsy DeVos accurately stated, "We're not really getting a choice at all." Have all the appropriate safety measures in place, such as masks, social distancing, and potentially staggered schedules, but please don't deprive our young children of the face-to-face interaction with teachers and their peers they desperately need right now to socially, emotionally, and educationally thrive. If not five days, what are you going to tell the families with two working parents who will have to use childcare, in which case exposure risk is the same or higher without any educational benefit? If not five days, what are you going to tell teachers contending with a class full of students who have fallen behind their educational benchmarks because of the inadequacies of online learning? What are you going to tell our children who deserve a sense of normalcy in physically going to school and seeing with their friends? If not Prince William, then which Northern Virginia school system is going to do right by our younger children and send them back to school for a full five days? Provide those educators and students at higher risk with a freely virtual online option, but please prioritize having our youngest learners back to school with a model that caters to their specific needs. Waiting for a vaccine to materialize, to send them back, is not feasible or realistic at this point. And I would just say, you know, after hearing a lot of these other speakers, I, again, I can only speak to those parents with early learners at this point, but my daughter is an avid learner who loves going to school and seeing her friends, and I've noticed a recurring theme among some of the other speakers is, this age demographics enthusiasm for online learning tends to wane because of all the distractions that are present, because it's just, there's no way to replicate the in-person experience of being there with their teachers. She, the better part of her kindergarten year has, has suffered from it. I just ask that for her and many other countless students, that you please at least provide that as a viable option and avenue for those of us who are comfortable with it, and let those who aren't also have their own avenue. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Fabiola Martinez. You can unmute your microphone, Fabiola Martinez. Fabiola Storga Martinez, you click your microphone icon, it will turn on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I'm, I'm very pleased about a lot of the comments, and I'm very grateful to get the opportunity, but I'm, I only got this, the message about this meeting through, like, Facebook, a mom group, like, I didn't remember receiving an email through the school system or any, like, school portals about this meeting, so I think definitely a survey is needed that goes out by mail, because not everybody has internet, and that everybody's, you know, educated enough to access the internet. So I am, of course, in favor of returning full-time students back to school as a healthcare provider. I think, working right now in a cardiac unit, I see no cases of COVID, like, thankfully I don't work with, you know, thankfully, like, the numbers have dropped. So I feel like safe to send my child to school, and I know, I mean, we've been the frontliners, and I think it's now the turn, like, the teachers, you know, because every profession has a risk. And speaking out of heart, you know, I, I didn't become a nurse, I didn't know that we were going to have this pandemic, but, you know, I went, I took my fears aside, and that's what I want my son to learn, that, you know, he has to, he has to leave the fear beside, because I want him to be, I want to be, I want him to be brave. And I think, you know, there's no, like, a perfect solution for everything, but I think if we at least questions or survey the parents, like, all the parents, what they feel comfortable with, that will be a good solution, and, you know, I know we're doing the best, everybody's doing the best they can. And there's been great, great ideas given in this, through this webinar. I hope they get utilized, I truly do, and I want to thank everybody, and please, I'm also an advocate for ESL students and single moms, that we have to do both, you know, we have to do triple jobs, and it's, it's impossible to, as much as I would love my child to be in homeschool, it's unrealistic to expect an elementary, elementary children to be disciplined enough to be a hundred percent virtual. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is David Moser.
Yes, hello, this is Dave Moser. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. I, I want to talk more on a process basis. I know that the ramifications of this is huge, right? You could, the damage to the students, we're seeing it now, anyone who says online is as good as private is, in person is, obviously, that's not correct. Everyone's going the one way, and you certainly have a chance of people dying in a mass breakup. Both of those are huge possibilities, and no one knows the answer. So there's pros and cons of both, but what I would ask is that we take, one thing is move the risk floor up a bit, up. We can't be the county that, when there's a snowflake on the west side of the county, we call off school and call it a day. We got to move the risk floor up, because at times it changes. The damage to these kids for not going to school are huge. Don't know what the right decision is, but I think we need to move that risk floor. Second thing is, we need to change, we need to metric this. Whatever we do, it won't be perfect, it won't be the right call. We have to metric everything and be agile and move quickly. We see something working, jump on that. We see something not working, stop it. Do it quickly. It's got to move quickly, because the answer you're going to come out with, it will not be the right answer. The right answer will be six months down the road. You've got to be able to move as things move. Second other thing is, is give the principals, give the teachers the power to make choices. The answers will come from the lowest level. Let them try things, let them do stuff, let them try, see what works online, let them do different things, let the principals, there's, there's different buildings, there's different populations. So you need to let them make choices and metric it and see what works and see what doesn't, and move on it quickly. The other concern we have is basically the fourth quarter curriculum was dropped, and a lot of our subjects, like math, build on each other. We got to find a way to incorporate that fourth quarter curriculum into the, to the next year's school year and accelerate it. We can't just drop it, because if they move on in a math curriculum, they're going to be lost. They have to be able to catch up from that stuff that was missed material to get up, and there has to be a plan, whether we do virtual or we do in-house or in-person. But please try to move up the risk floor and metric and move with the time, give options, change things as they go. Give parents options, let them choose whether their kids in or not, and give them chances through the school year to change. We don't know how this virus is going to change. We don't know the impact it has to the kids, or we know that it's, it's huge. All the possibilities are huge, and we need to move accordingly through the school year based on how things change, if the data changes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dennis Caravantes. You have the floor.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Dennis Caravantes, and I'm a resident in the Okopan District. We are living through unprecedented times. That statement sounds like hyperbole, hyperbole, but it's a fact. This is once-in-a-lifetime event, and we pray and hope that it will pass. While people working on a vaccine do their jobs, we have to do ours. All of us have an obligation to think outside our prescribed roles and work towards collective solutions. It will be easy for me to advocate for virtual, for the virtual-only option and focus on the requirements for online teaching necessary to execute it. I believe none of us wants to repeat, a repeat of the spring experience. The virtual-only option works for me. The virtual only option works for me, safety, for my, for the safety of my family. However, it will, it will negate the reality of others in my community. The only sensible approach is a hybrid approach with standards and schedules for students, teachers, administrators, and parents. None of us are going to be happy, but we all get a piece of what we want. You see, as parents, it is our duty to provide, protect, and prepare our kids. As a school elected officials, administrators, and educators, you have accepted or contracted with us to assist in the protecting and preparing part. I need you to help me protect them from this virus and I need you to continue preparing them to be part of this community despite the virus. I'm already teaching my five-year-old and my seven-year-old to navigate a world with COVID-19. They know it is temporary until a vaccine is developed. I'm working with them on wearing a mask and washing, virtual hugging and on the, uh, and to be attentive to their surroundings. They understand it is for their protection, mine, their classmates, and their families. Kids get it. We all, we are all in it together. Now I need you to set the stage and ensure they can continue to learn. We need to demonstrate that adults are truly in charge and ready to work for them. No one else is going to come to our rescue. We have to come up with a plan. We must plan along four areas. Promoting behaviors that reduce the spread, maintaining healthy environments, maintaining healthy operations, and preparing for when someone gets sick. So I have a few questions for you. What is our testing strategy? How often are we going to test school personnel? How often and when are we doing school deep cleaning? Could we do four day or six day school weeks with shorter or longer days and shifts? We need to be flexible and focus on answers. This situation is unprecedented and we, we are the foundation for what comes next. In order to put all other pieces in place, we need to.
Okay, our next speaker is Eileen Nelson. You have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Nelson and I am an English teacher at C D Hilton High School. There are a lot of things that will be different in the school buildings and classrooms if the decision is made to send children back to school. I would like to offer three suggestions to parents to help make this transition easier for everyone. First, we ask that you start now having your child wear masks for extended periods of time each day. Start with fifteen minutes and work up to several hours. The fairest thing we can do for children is set positive expectations. We suggest that you also wear a mask so that children can feel relaxed with the adults in their lives having their faces covered. Children who feel comfortable in masks will make a smoother transition back into the classroom. Please do not wait until the week before school to do this. The sooner you start, the more comfortable your child will be. Second, we ask that you have at least one socially distanced meal or activity with your children each day. The classrooms will be different. We will need to keep children three to six feet away from each other in all directions. We need children to understand the necessity of distancing for extended and continuous periods of time. You will help ease your child's concerns about where they will be in a classroom and where others will be as well. Third, talk to your child about the new normal. We are all going to be experiencing this together. Children are very used to working in pairs and groups and working close by another classmate. This is not going to be how we structure classrooms in the time of COVID. All the adults and all of the students will be wearing masks. Your child may have some anxiety associated with these new procedures and requirements. Please listen to your child's concerns and reassure them that although things will be different, teachers will be there to take care of them and help them grow and learn. Each of these three steps will help your child transition to a new normal. The more practice your child has with masking and distancing requirements, the more secure and positive your child will feel about going to school. And we, the teachers, will do everything we can to make your children feel safe, comfortable, and open to learning. We need to work as an education community of administrators, teachers, parents, and students to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Katie Speaks. You have the floor. Catherine Speaks. Your mic is open. There you go. Are you able to speak? Your mic should be good.
Uh, it's.
I'm sorry, I just cut you off.
Okay. Okay, uh, my name is Katie Speaks and this coming school year will have piles of information and guidelines from the VDOE, the CDC, and all kinds of organizations. Um, what I would, would like for you to do is, um, to do something that seems sort of impossible based on what I see in the news and social media, and that is to consider other factors in addition to just COVID-19. Um, consider the mental health and social development of our students if they are continued to be kept from interacting with their peers. To consider the host of studies showing the importance of relationship in student achievement and the difficulty of building those relationships in a virtual environment. To consider our at-risk students and how limiting their access to teachers, counselors, and other adult mentors in the building will affect their achievement. To consider children stuck at homes with abusive parents who will not have school as a safe place to go where there are adults who can advocate for them. To consider that no amount of money spent on devices and programs can bridge the gap between students with parents who have the time and resources available to assist with virtual education and those who do not. To consider the education more than the dissemination of information. And it takes more than a high-speed internet connection and a reliable device to teach a child. To consider the strains we are putting on families. I know many, um, parents have spoken already about what they are going to do with their kids if they cannot be in school five days a week. To consider older children and families who may be asked to take on childcare responsibilities, which may not be age-appropriate in addition to their own online schoolwork. To consider that while it might be simpler and easier, a one-size approach may not be, a one-size-fits-all approach may not be better in this situation. And that there may be a way to send most of us to school five days a week while still protecting the medically vulnerable along, among us. And finally, to consider the message they're sending to kids and to the community when they are allowed to go to their AAU basketball practice or their job at a restaurant or a retail store. But we say school is not worth the risk. Education is essential, which means that I am an essential worker. And just like the healthcare, transportation, food services, and other workers, I want to be able to go back to work and do my job. I want to be able to teach our kids. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shuler Aarons.
Good evening. Thank you to the board. I, uh, as always, we appreciate these opportunities to speak in the hearings. Um, you know, I have a bit more of a cynical, uh, direct view of the situation. Um, I appreciate a lot of the other speakers who spoke, um, you know, a lot of them seem to be representing a, a lot of what, uh, a lot of people are feeling. I will say it's a bit, uh, upsetting that there's only sixty-eight speakers out of the hundreds of thousands of citizens there on this county. Um, I was born and raised in Prince William County. I attended school here. I graduated. I went to Nova. Uh, I have three children who attended this school district. I have one upcoming fourth grader and one ninth grader. Um, I think this is extremely detrimental to their health and wellbeing and their education. Um, you know, to be quite honest, i- it's, it's frustrating. You know, we have, uh, a lot of teachers uh, who don't want to come back to the classroom and I, I find that extremely irritating. Um, there have been recent publications from Inside Nova and other publications saying that it's teachers who are really pushing. Um, I've heard on here a bunch of teachers who do support going back to school, uh, full in school. And there are tons of residents in this county who support those teachers. We praise them. I mean, those are the real heroes. Um, I understand there are some teachers who may have underlying health issues and there are some students. I believe there should be a virtual option for those people. Um, but the fact is, teachers need to get back into the classroom. Um, we have grocery store employees, restaurant employees, Amazon and other delivery people, uh, construction workers and so forth who have been working every single day since this pandemic started. Uh, we are in phase three and even more people are returning to work. Um, I think it's time for teachers to do the same things that everyone else has been doing. Uh, I don't know if the board is aware. I heard someone else mention three to six feet. The Virginia Department of Education slid into their regulations yesterday that they are now saying that three feet is an acceptable distance. And that's just now being reported in the last hours to the media. So, you know, I think if the board really takes some of the numbers into consideration, some of the updates we're getting and some of the trends, I don't see why there's not an option for full in-school service. You know, if the board is worried about lawsuits and, and other issues, offer a waiver to some of the people who want to have a full, full in-school. I mean, there are tons of people who support signing a waiver and sending their kid to school, not holding the school board responsible. Um, you know, i- it's just very upsetting. Um, I know you guys work hard. I knew the teachers work hard, but there is a crowd of people who really want to get back to normal. And I just want to point out, I got a few seconds left, elections have consequences. And if this school board falls short of delivering what the people want, there will be consequences.
Our next speaker is, I apologize for not being able to pronounce the last name, but it's Melinda By Casine, first name Melinda. Okay.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, yes, my name is Melinda By Casienna. I am a fifteen-year resident of Prince William County and I have five children, two of which continue their education in Prince William and both of them have IEPs. Um, I am also one of the founding members of Prince William County Special Education and I'm currently, um, president. And I'm also a past member of CEAC. In a typical summer, I would have greeted you all and answered your questions in the poultry barn at the Prince William County Fair. But as we are all aware, this is not a typical summer. This summer, we are struggling in our homes with the information that is presented to us changing daily at times. We are being asked by our children, what about school? And trying to explain to our children who do not understand why the bus no longer comes. We are staying inside to keep our loved ones safe. We are struggling without good community guidance. You all have the chance to reduce that struggling, to give answers to our children and to help keep them safe. There is no answer that will make everyone happy. There is no answer that will keep everyone safe. But we all need to dig deep and come up with a steady, sound guidance so that families may digest it and plan. You have been given guidance from the feds and the state. Now it is your time to make the choices that are best for Prince William, to include all children in meeting their needs. You were elected by the Prince William community and you need to do right by them. You need to think of every child in the division as if they were your child from the healthiest and least at risk to the most vulnerable and every teacher as your friend. In this pandemic, it is clear that all things are not equal and not all mediums work for all students. Not all children are able to academically benefit from synchronous virtual learning. Some children need more kinesthetic learning. Some of our most vulnerable require large teams of staff to meet their academic goals. Our children are all different, but let's be clear, all of our chingle, children will mingle together, bringing germs back and forth from our preschoolers just beginning their journey in child find to our seniors already to, for the next lead. We need to remember that the neurobiotic has ravaged our schools in the past and how hard it was to control it. In the world of this pandemic, PEE is essential in large amounts being provided by the district, nurses trained, and highly enforced sick policies and supports for those who miss school and work. We need to do, dig deep to do what is right and best for our community. For all of our students to include all students, no matter what their strengths or their challenges. We must provide education that meets their needs and helps them overcome their challenges. This past straight, this past spring, Prince William County did not give a, a strong community guy.
Our next speaker is Susan Burrhouse.
Hi, um, I've never addressed the board before, so I'm a little nervous and like getting more nervous every three minutes. Um, but I'm grateful to finally have the opportunity to speak to you. And I have three children who are Prince William County students. They just finished up fourth, eighth, and eleventh grades. And so I've been part of the Prince William County School Community for quite a long time, but not until tonight have I had the courage to speak up for myself and for my kids. And then what I need to tell you was that we're not okay. Our kids are absolutely not okay. And we need our kids to have as much in-person schooling as possible next year. Now for me, choices for parents, teachers, and students who prefer or need virtual schooling, I mean, that's essential. That goes without saying, I think. But for many kids, in-person learning and live engagement is the only way they're going to succeed and grow. And for many families, that's the only way that we'll make it. Um, so in-person schooling as frequently as possible, that needs to be an option too. Um, obviously, there's a lot of passion and disagreement about this. Um, working parents in particular have been called out and vilified on social media if we express interest in any in-person learning. Um, but as working parents, we have legitimate concerns about potentially having to give up jobs, reduce hours if our kids are home a day or two a week, learning virtually. And we have concerns about the affordability, the availability of childcare. Um, look at the comments on Facebook or, or really don't. That is like never a good idea for anyone. But you'll see, working parents, our parenting skills are being questioned. We're being accused of relying on schools and teachers to babysit our kids. And that's just not true and it is not fair. Public schools are an essential part of our society and of our communities. Lives, families, and jobs are built around children attending school. I mean, I have specific concerns about virtual school activities for our older children. Um, and we haven't heard as much about this tonight. Um, but this past spring, my elementary schooler did really well. He was supported by a fantastic teacher and administrators at Teakley Wood. And his positive experience really just opened my eyes and changed my thinking. But my middle schooler and my high schooler suffered greatly. So please don't think that these older students need or deserve any less in-person or live engagement than other groups. Um, think about the kids in the transition years, those going into middle school, those going into high school. Those transition years are always precarious times. Kids can fail, kids can fall through the cracks. And I'm really worried about those transition kids this year. Um, think about the rising seniors getting ready for college or the workforce. They don't have time to play catch-up after this year. They can't settle for the lowered expectations that we've heard about earlier tonight. You know, they, they're out of time for that. So please be aware that also many of these middle schoolers in high schools, despite their age, they can't just be left alone all day to school themselves. They're, that's just not going to happen. The academic and mental health risks to that loneliness, even for the older children, are just too much to bear. Um, families of all students need to be given the option for as much in-school, in-person schooling as possible. And public schools are really the heart of our community, so please don't give up on that. I, I know we can do it and you'll be working hard. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Adis Valenti. Adis Valenti, okay, you have.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Adis Valenti and I have three kids, a third grader, a fifth grader, and an eleventh grader. My husband and I are full-time employees who provide for our family. One single income is not enough to provide for our family. If we lean to go with virtual learning, I would like for you to take working families like mine in consideration. I have full faith in our family, in our school system to figure out a way to make the school safe for our kids and staff. I one hundred percent feel our kids really need peer and teacher interaction. I also feel that families with children who have big age gap like mine will put pressure on the high school aged kids to help, to help. Please they, take that into consideration as well. Our state is slowly opening back up, eating restaurants, bars, gyms, movie theaters, et cetera, with families making the choice to participate. I think parents should also be given the choice. I think parents should also be given the choice if we want to send our kids to school as well. Our kids see the impact of the pandemic and we need to give our kids more credit um, that they are smart enough to adapt to the new normal. One more important thing I have, one more important thing is I have a son entering eleventh grade, which is the most important and critical year. How will virtual learning affect his future SATs, A- ACTs, extracurricular activities like theater, sports, student council committees and all other things colleges look for? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sinépre Marks.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can you have the floor?
Okay, so I am currently, uh, a rising senior at Garfield High School. And my main thing is giving us both students and parents the choice as to whether or not we want to do virtual learning. I lost my eleventh grade year, one of the most important years in high school due to COVID nineteen. I can never get back those years. I would like to, but I can't. However, virtual learning really did, while at first it was really hard, it really did help me because I am the type of student that works at their own pace and goes at their own, uh, uh, goes at their own pace. And so with virtual learning, for a lot of people, it would make a lot of people feel safe and secure when, when everything can change on a dime. I have talked to some of my friends and my friends also feel the same, that they are too scared to go back to school. And they feel as though until there is a vaccine available that we should not be, that we should not go back to school. My other thing is if we weren't able to go back to school, how would social distancing be in place when you have so many students in a single building? How would social distancing be in place when you have so many students in one single classroom? How will you be able to monitor and track and make sure that students are wearing masks, especially at the high school level where high schoolers do not want to listen to their, to their teachers sometimes? Thank you. I yield my time.
Our next speaker is Melissa Hunneford. Do you have the floor?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Melissa Hunneford. I'm a veteran teacher of twenty years, seventeen of those years in Prince William County Schools. I'm also a parent to two county high school students. I am at high risk of complications due to two health conditions. I have a few points I'm hoping you'll consider. First, for those of us teachers and staff at high risk, we are wondering if we will have to risk our lives to go to work. There need to be enough virtual options for us. Second, like many families, mine is a two-teacher family. Will my husband have to go to work and risk bringing the virus home to me from his school? Spouse teachers of high-risk teachers need to be given the virtual option also. Offering leave from Family and Medical Leave Act is an impossible option because it is unpaid. Third, since March, we've kept our children away from friends. They're only allowed to see them from a distance outside. Nevertheless, we see students together in groups in the neighborhood not preparing for a safe return to school. In the news, we hear about colleges and daycares with surges in cases once they reopened. It seems that our sacrifices and those like us to try to make school safe have been for naught. Is the board considering that Virginia's Phase Three allowances are contrary to what must be done to prepare for a safe return to school? Fourth, masks in schools are necessary for everyone. Would a middle or high schooler be able to withstand peer pressure if he or she was made fun of for wearing a mask in school because they are only encouraged, even if that student has a high-risk person at home? I've been told that the legalities make it impossible to mandate masks in school. Yet yesterday, Fairfax County Schools announced they are mandating masks all day for those who choose to go into school. It is not acceptable to open schools without adequate protection for employees. And masks are the best protection according to epidemiologists. Fifth, most infected people are most contagious before they realize they have the virus. By the time teachers are notified to quarantine, it is likely too late for them and anyone who lives with them. What will be the availability of COVID tests for teachers? Will repeated tests be paid for or will we be on our own finding that? Sixth and last, will results for COVID testing be slow, causing us to use up our sick leave waiting because we already used up our two weeks of leave from the Families First Act with the last time we had to quarantine? I implore the board to consider the humanity of teachers and staff as you make this plan. We named a school after a recently deceased staff member a few weeks ago. What will we do when multiple teachers and staff pass away and others-
Okay, our next speaker is Gina Deville. Please speak, uh, stick to your three-minute time. Your mic is open.
Hi, can you hear me?
As we can, you have the floor.
Great. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Let me start with a little background. Both my husband and I are both healthcare workers. I am a cardiothoracic surgery nurse. I have been a nurse for twenty years. It is with this experience that I come to the conclusion about how our children should return to school this fall. Since March, when the epidemic started, I have been classified as an essential worker. I have been asked to develop skills outside my current scope of practice and comfort level. I have been deployed to locations in the hospital that are not where my expertise lies. I've provided direct care to patients with COVID nineteen. Just today, I placed a COVID-positive pregnant woman on a life-saving device after she coded during her C-section this morning. I have my temperature checked twice daily, wash my hands at least thirty times, rub at least a gallon of Purell into my hands and wear a mask for a minimum of thirteen hours a day. Sometimes I am required to wear two masks at a time. I have done this for one reason and one reason only, for my patients. I strongly feel we need to stand, we need to send our children back to school this fall. I have watched the light drain from my child's eyes because she is starving for knowledge and social interaction. She asks me every day if she's going back to school. In fact, she begged me to speak tonight. We are denying our children the structured social interaction and knowledge that they demand. I did not sign up to homeschool my child because I feel strongly about what a public school education can provide my child. You all are, are educators and your focus needs to be on a solution to return our children to the classroom. Science has proven that simply wearing a mask reduces your chances of exposure to this disease. We cannot continue to live our lives in fear. We are a nation of people who stand up for what we believe in and we will always persevere. If sending our children back to school full-time this fall cannot be accomplished and distance learning is the only option, you need to, and approach this like an online class. There needs to be a syllabus, lecture that is done through Zoom meeting or recording, a chat room for the students to ask questions and a way for assignments to be turned in and graded. Split the classes and have morning and afternoon classes. Extend the school year into the summer if need be, uh, co- to accomplish the school of returning to school. The material that was provided to our children, the latter part of this past year, was an epic fail. As a parent, I demand more from you as world-class educators that you claim to be. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Ashley Sahir. You can unmute your microphone. Ashley Sahir.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. You have the floor.
Okay, um, so I have two children, uh, that are, uh, Prince William. One's in middle school, one's in elementary. Um, I'm just here to kind of just state whatever, whatever the decision is, whether it's distance learning or it's actual, um, in the classroom, just take these considerations, uh, take these concerns into consideration. Um, concerned with, and a lot of these things are coming from my children as well. Um, they're concerned with the bus loops before and after school and the cleanliness of each bus as they are shared throughout multiple schools, K through twelve, which means ages five to eighteen. They are also concerned how will the cleanliness of the schools be maintained throughout the day? PPE, children are more likely to remove, lose and share masks. Will the, will the schools require them to be worn? If so, for how long? Will they be provided by the schools? Uh, what if my child forgets her mask? What then happens? Um, distance learning, will there be dis- a distance learning option or a hybrid option? Will there be a mental health or behavior support for students and staff on a daily basis? We must address fear, anxiety and depression. Uh, the adjustment and, the adjustments and the rules in place will be taxing on both the students and the staff. I have a quote, few quotes from my kids. They're seven and twelve and I'll state their age at the end of the quote. I don't want to get yelled at for not wearing my mask, age twelve. I'm bored. My friends' parents won't let them outside, age twelve. Online is too complicated and weird. I can't focus all the time. I don't want to do it on the computer and they should just send our work in the mail, age twelve. I don't want to go to school, age seven. I want to go to school on my computer for twelve minutes, age seven. I miss my friends and teachers, seven and twelve. Uh, if I catch Corona, um, at school, it's going to be your fault, meaning my fault, age seven and twelve. Um, so, um, if a student or a staff member does test positive for COVID nineteen, what will the procedures, uh, that will follow for that? Will there be like a mandatory fourteen-day shutdown for the entire school? What's happening with that? Uh, will the board consider purchasing a new or upgraded HVAC system to lower pathogens in the air to increase airflow? Will there be a central online location that will be more user-friendly when it comes to accessing, downloading, uploading homework and tests? During the initial shutdown, going online education, doing online education was not very easy for my children to follow and they didn't, they lost interest fairly quickly. Um, I would have to assist them the entire time, um, and to help them navigate to complete assignments, usually at the same time. I know teachers have websites, but it's not always up to date and easy to follow, uh, from the, from website to website. Will there be a teacher available after hours, meaning after-work hours to assist parents and teachers together? Or I mean, parents and students together? What parts of the current curriculum will be removed if we choose a distance learning? We need to look at what is absolutely necessary for students to learn while in school. Our MPE are just as important, as important as other subjects. Will there be a central hub to talk to someone directly live for online concerns to help with homework assignments? Um, I'm a realist and understand you cannot meet all safety concerns and-
Okay, our next speaker is Catherine Snably. Catherine Snably.
Hello, uh, my name's Catherine Snably and I have two daughters who are in elementary school. And first of all, I want to say that I'm grateful for what the teachers and the administrators were able to pull together for the kids from March until June. It was really amazing and it was spur of the moment and I really do appreciate everything they were to accomplish. However, for the elementary school children, the weekly learning plans were simply not enough instruction. There were several websites you had to go to. You had to click here and click there and it took ten minutes to get to a video that was about two and a half minutes worth of instruction. The total that the kids were given for a week could be completed in about two hours if they were really focused and they really did their work diligently. The weekly Zoom meetings were about a half hour at most and much of the time was spent talking about what was going on with the pandemic and how it was affecting the school schedule and the projects. Um, it was nice that the kids got a chance to see their friends and teachers, but they didn't seem to accomplish much of anything from a educational standpoint. Um, there were so many different platforms. There were reading platforms, math platforms, science platforms, et cetera. And there were so many different passwords and usernames. I had to keep a list in my phone of all of the different usernames and passwords for each of my two children because everything was different. The clever badges were great, but they didn't work for everything. Um, it was impossible for my fifth grader to figure out how to log on to things herself, so I had to do the logins for every single thing that they were tasked with. I'm really worried that the kids are going to be very far behind. They've not had any professional instruction in nearly four months. By the end of the summer, it'll be almost six months. This time off is going to really hurt their education and who knows how much backslide there's going to be for their education in the future. Um, as a professional myself, I don't feel like I'm prepared to act as a teacher to my two kids. Teachers go to school for a really long time to learn how to do thi- these things. They learn how to teach kids. They learn what to do and what not to do. I'm not ready and able to do this as a parent myself. Not to mention, it's absolutely impossible to do this if you have more than one child. Having children at two different levels, you try to help one child and then the other child has questions and then the first child doesn't understand and it's just, it's just, it, it, it's impossible. Add on top of that, if you have to work, it's just asking parents to do something that is just completely impossible. The kids need some kind of structure. They need a school schedule. They need pop, they need socialization. They need to be able to go out and see their friends. They're so depressed and they have so many issues with not being able to go out and, and see other people. Um, I'm just really concerned for their well-being in general and for their social and emotional development. And I think going back to school would be a great thing.
Okay, our next speaker is Sarah Case. Sarah Case, you can unmute your microphone.
Uh, good evening. My name is Sarah Case and I'm the mother of an incoming kindergartner and a rising second grader at Westridge Elementary, as well as a rising sixth grader in the Boys Single Gender Program at Woodbridge Middle. I'm also the past president of Westridge PTA and serve as a member of the State Board of Directors of Virginia PTA. As a board member, I have had the opportunity to participate in conversations all over the state about the very topic we are discussing tonight. I sympathize with the vast challenges you are facing in responding to COVID in our schools. I don't know the right answer. There are facts to back up any scenario that has been or will be considered and most likely, no matter what direction you all choose, a faction of our community will be upset. I want to take what time I have to ask you some questions to consider and perspectives to think about. I will also email them to you so you can review them later. Regarding our students, how will individually needs be addressed? Will teachers and staff be allowed to have one-on-one interaction in a virtual setting? How does my second grader get the help he needs with handwriting and motor skills? How does my sixth grader get the individual mental health support that he needs to help him get through the year? With the new guidance of three feet and masks versus six feet social distancing, what is being looked at regarding classroom capacity? My kindergartner currently wears her mask for a while and then decides it looks better as a hair bow. Are we expecting five to six-year-olds to wear masks for most of the day when most adults struggle to? Regarding virtual versus in-person, who will be overseeing the virtual instruction? If my child participates in virtual instruction with, with Prince William County, will they be put in a class with others from their school? Will my local principal oversee both in-person staff instruction and virtual staff instruction? Will my local school receive the funding for my student if they're a hundred percent virtual? Or will that funding be going to a virtual learning fund? Will virtual instruction be interactive with the student in the classroom or will it be completely separate? Will it be mostly links to other sources or will it be live instruction from a teacher and how much? Will the in-person day require my students to sit in their seat for the whole time? Or is recess still a factor? Will special still be part of their day? Will my middle schooler be changing classes in the hall? If we have students only going into the building a couple days a week, when will parents be notified as to what those days are? Everyone needs to plan. Childcare and transportation needs to be arranged. This cannot be communicated via teacher assignment letter a week or two before school starts. There are so many more questions that we all have and a lot of them, I'm guessing, there are no answers for yet. And speaking tonight to address the fact that everyone needs details to make the most informed choices they can for the decisions for their families and situations. Please do not ask us as a community to make choices without details and information. We want this year to be successful and we can make positive and creative changes for our children's education, but only if the process, process is transparent to all and inclusive of everyone. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Val Daly.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have the floor.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for considering our input tonight as you prepare for the immensely challenging task of defining a return-to-school plan for our community. I am the mother of a rising freshman and a rising sophomore. My children are at a very impressionable age. Their experiences this year and in the next couple of years will lay the foundation for the young men they will become. I'm advocating for a return to traditional learning as my children thrive best with that structure. Their lack of access to community, friends and activities has had a noticeable impact on their engagement, motivation, feelings of self-worth and overall health and wellness. feelings of self-worth and overall health and well-being. We have all been on this call for two hours staring at a screen, fidgeting, getting distracted by the home life around us and the technical challenges of our own and callers connectivity issues and generally going in and out of focus and attention. Welcome to the student experience with remote learning. Students must return to school. The undue hardship placed on families by implementing remote schooling on any recurring basis is not sustainable. Parents must return to work and are unable to do so. They must be home to care for younger students. For those of us with older students, it is equally as hard to direct worktime focus to ensuring students are attending classes, focusing on their schoolwork and then also completing homework. This causes parents to make a decision to either work or pay attention to their children, a win-lose situation anyway you look at it. Students must return to school activities, clubs and sports. In a 2019 article, the CDC presented the importance of student connectedness. The more we allow our students to participate in school and feel a part of a community, the more successful they will be and the less likely they will turn to drugs, alcohol and other such things. Additionally, many students rely on these activities to help them get into and earn scholarships for college. Not allowing our students to participate in activities may jeopardize their ability to or desire to receive higher education. Students need face-to-face unmasked human interaction. Body language, including facial expressions, is key to communicating. Communication is key to building trust. When students do not trust teachers and teachers do not trust students, the transfer of knowledge is impossible. When students are allowed to hide behind online devices or physically mask themselves in anonymity, they act and say things they otherwise wouldn't if they were face-to-face. It is hard to hold someone accountable when they are anonymous. This, in fact, was the most memorable comment in my intro to high school tour last year. The principal noted how students were not allowed to wear hats or hoodies. The faculty and staff wanted to know each student and not allow them to hide undercover. How can you possibly learn who your students are when you can't see them? While I understand there are students, teachers and families in high-risk categories who will not feel comfortable with a return to school as it was last fall, there are many of us who prefer it. Data is showing that the short and likely long-term impact on the health, social and emotional, emotional well-being of our youth is much more detrimental than the likely effects of a virus. Allow us to do our jobs as parents and make our own decisions of what is right for our own families. I ask you to please consider a plan which provides alternatives for those who cannot or choose to not return to school, but enables those who can to have a traditional school experience, the building block for their future successes and the foundation for their transition to adulthood. Thank you for your consideration and good luck.
Our next speaker is Julia Biggins.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to Dr. Waltz, Dr. Latif and the school board for allowing us to speak to you on this important matter of returning to school during the coronavirus pandemic. Thank you also to the other speakers tonight, especially the teachers. My name is Dr. Julia Biggins. I speak to you tonight as a mother of four Prince William County School District children from kindergarten to 10th grade that will be attending three different schools in the fall. I also speak to you as an infectious disease scientist. I have vast experience with vaccine development for Ebola and influenza viruses and I am currently involved with the Department of Defense's response to the coronavirus pandemic. I strongly urge the school board to consider full-distance learning for most students in the Prince William County School System for the 2021 school year. As the recent data has demonstrated, this county is, this country is nowhere near its exit from the coronavirus pandemic. Although the currently reported case numbers in Virginia are low, it would be irresponsible of us as parents and school administrators to send our children back to indoor classrooms to potentially contribute to further spread of the virus. We have seen repeatedly that lifting social distancing practices too early leads to spike in cases higher than the original peaks. A positive COVID test among students, staff and teachers is likely inevitable and the actions required to prevent large-scale transmission in the school and community will be enormously disruptive to the families involved. Governor Northam's return-to-school guidance provides maximum flexibility for local school districts to make their own plans. There is nothing in the guidance that mandates a physical return to school. Given this flexibility, I strongly recommend full-distance learning for most students. We should reserve any classroom space for those students that need it most, such as children in special education programs, CTE programs, learning English as a second language or those students that come from vulnerable home environments or have no homes at all. In addition to preventing continued spread of the virus, I am extremely worried about the toll that going back to school will take on our children's mental health. I understand and appreciate the mental health toll that this is taking on all of us, but I fear that the potential for repeated disruptions for cleanings and quarantines along with severely altered classroom experience will only exacerbate the impact of our children's long-term mental health. According to what has been the research that has shown about how the virus is transmitted indoors, singing in music class, shouting in PE and other activities will have to be canceled. If the decision is made to open schools to all students, I implore you to require masks and social distancing is not possible and to develop a well-thought-out and consistent plan for when students, teachers and staff test positive for COVID-19. The facts are clear. It is not simply safe to send our children and teachers physically back to school as long as there is a virus circulating in the community. My husband and I both work full-time outside of the house, but we are committed to support our children with virtual learning in the fall. I have much more to say, but thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Norsaline Arizadon. Your microphone is open. Norsaline Arizadon. Arizadon. Your microphone is open. You can go ahead and speak.